More bids if it wasn't something that was so long that.
Yeah, well, this is like.
License looks pretty good.
But I'd like to, you know, give you these next two weeks to review this, come back with comments. I will start with at least the template. I know I have the template, but I'll look for the tools that I need that will be different from slate roof installation and.
Oh, we almost mentioned log viewers as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
You got the information for you?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, so.
On the materials, Lee, you got this information from the information blog provider?
Um.
Or off the internet?
Some of it was redundant, but his was just like information only and whereas this came through, if you look at the little separate, there's two pieces I gave you.
Yeah.
This is the template.
Okay, yep, I got it, yep, yep.
Um, that worked well, um, and gave some interesting information when you look at these different links.
Okay.
Um, so this company basically made it easy and say, hey, these are the things you need to make sure you ask for.
Sure.
So, you know, where I don't know what to ask to make sure we're not missing anything.
Yeah.
This was a good one. And that's why I offered a copy to Bob. I'm hoping he'll take a few minutes to look at it if you have any input.
I'll try to, yeah.
Yeah.
I will say one thing with the part with the payment.
Yeah.
If you pick a contractor, you're gonna probably find in his contract, he's already got that caveat that he gets so much upfront. And especially with the slate material, most of them have it in there because it's pricey.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. Well, we won't be using the contract anyway. They'll be signing on to ours.
Yeah.
Right, but they're gonna have a contract, a performance contract, that they're gonna come to you with so they can do the job. And they're gonna prove that they're insured. I hope you're requesting that. They're gonna prove that they're insured and in their contract, the language they're gonna have is gonna specify because most of the builders do that, have that in there, that they're gonna get a percentage. It may be the cost of materials.
Yeah, yeah. Anyways, it's a start.
Anything else on your list?
Uh, working on many items in the front office. We've almost got the revised timesheet. Um, I'm just waiting to get comments back. I've contacted all the different departments and we're waiting to get comment back again school, um, to try to implement the in and out, in and lunches, meals taken, shown on the cards. We're working on that. I had a lot of pending work wish lists that I've got.
I'll be working on that.
I have nothing else for tonight about that. I'm completely.
Yeah, really. Since we went around the table, I got two things off the, um, I know the answer is because I asked him, but just for everybody's education, the roof at the police department, fire department, it's been fixed.
Yeah. John told me they went over and fixed. Did you see him or?
No, no, I didn't see it.
Yeah.
They haven't had to go for that yet, have they?
No, no.
The police department and the.
Yep, there was a leak and they stripped.
And then they had the drip edge.
Yeah, the drip edge blew off, that some of the roof lifted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And investment policy has been.
Well, she's had a little bit of turmoil in her and she hasn't had, I can send her another reminder asking if she's had changes or that, but I'm losing us.
Okay. There's no, well, keep on dragging it up too much.
Yeah.
Um. Did I get, back when I went to that seminar up there in Conway, you came back with some training notes for, well, no, they have the notes, but also had some flyers for training and stuff like that and had different times. But I, I gave, I thought I gave them to you, didn't I?
Yeah.
Is there some in there for some upcoming trainings and stuff so we can, I thought we were gonna give like a calendar so we can know if we can, you know, if time allows and go to.
I didn't create a calendar, but I still have those flyers.
Well, no, it's a calendar, but just, or just a list of what it was because they're all different pages. I thought we're gonna take and do something so that way we can, you know, we have the time to go over those particular things. Because there was one on budgeting coming up in September.
I think I have it in my calendar, so, you know.
There's a couple of other things too that were coming up.
How do we get that? Are we getting off together?
Yeah, if, uh, please.
Yeah.
That'd be good because I know one of them had a thing where it was a, it was like a book on just different policies and stuff that for the town. We should probably implement. It was like a template book that came through with one of the trainings. So it probably wouldn't hurt, no one wants to go to it. So we can get the free resource.
No, I think this one is coming up with tax rate setting too.
Hmm, yeah, that'd be interesting. So that's all I got. What would you say?
I have a question. Wait, last, last meeting, if I remember right, you said you came, when you came, you had to come in from your vacation to haul trash. What happened there? How come, how come the guy from.
Because it was my understanding he was on vacation at the same time I was. And there was a miscommunication between him and I. That's what happened.
Who, him?
Pete.
Okay.
It was my understanding that he was on vacation at.
I, I thought when we set this up, that even with this, it seems to me this, this should be something that he would go, you know.
Through Jeff.
To the roadie.
Yeah. If in the future, coordinate with Jeff because Jeff has to schedule Pete's work.
I'm trying to remember. I remember mentioning something to Jeff, but I don't know if it was ever, I remember talking to him in the office here, but I don't know if he saw me coordinated with Pete. I don't wanna speak for him because I can't remember, but.
Yeah.
I did. I know it was mentioned to him at one point in the office.
It has to be more than just mentioned. It has to be like a.
I got several more vacations coming up, so.
Okay, I'm just saying, you know, I just don't want this to happen again. You should be going to Jeff.
Yeah.
And saying, you know, I'm gonna be on vacation such or in a week and this is the days where we'll need Pete to go. It's just like, I, I don't think Jeff would go to see one of your guys to do some work without going through you.
Yeah. No, I can.
Okay, I'm just saying, you should be going to his, his boss, okay?
I'm good.
All right, Collins, I'll start with Woody since you're front center.
Couple of them. One, I was in a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned to you about the Pioneer Sportsman Club.
Yes.
Um.
Pioneer Sportsman.
Yeah.
I might have come up with a solution. I kinda mentioned it to Brian. When I was thinking of it, I charmed an email real quick. The suggestion I had might help all parties involved and would be to take a transfer station sticker and have it laminated and put Pioneer Sportsman Club there and give it to them. I talked to the gentleman who came to me about it and he said, we have regular trash pickup. He said, what we're looking at is prop items. You know, they set up, uh, how you wanna describe how they set up, they use props. And, you know, it might be a TV, it might be this, it might be that, that they use and that's what they're looking to get rid of. I mean, I think that would be an easy way, um, you know, one of their guys can bring it. I mean, they still have to understand that if it's a TV, they're still gonna pay for it. If it's a refrigerator, you're still gonna pay for it. You're no different than anyone else and I don't, I don't think we should treat them any different than anyone else. I just thought if we did something with a sticker and with their name on it and that, you know, you have to present it when you come in, you know, if one of their guys brings it up, present it, boom. Like he said, they have regular trash pickup. This is for the other items, prop items is what he called. I don't know. It was just a idea I came up with and while I was thinking of it, I presumed it up.
These prop items, um, I'm just thinking, televisions, any of that stuff hazardous, if it's, because normally a TV would come out, I would assume.
And if it's all one piece, these are gonna come in damaged, I'm thinking. So are there any issues around any of that? I don't think so. I mean, it, well, it's a, you know, we drop one up there, it breaks.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't think they really be, I just use that as an example. I'm not saying it would be a TV.
Yeah.
He mentioned prop items, so I don't know. I don't know if they like set up rooms out in the outdoors and, you know what I mean? I, I've walked through there with the fire department, but it's a shooting range, you know?
Yeah, I know, it's guns.
You go, you go practice.
I, I have a shot there, but I don't think they wanna, they're not gonna shoot anything that's glass or porcelain or anything like that that's, that's gonna be hazardous. They wouldn't wanna put that in the range.
They're probably shooting dummies and things.
Yeah, he just, he'd said, he had said prop items.
Yeah.
They might have furniture or something if they're doing a room or something like that. And I'm just speculating because I don't know. Yeah, and like I said, I, I went in there and it's been, I don't know, I think the last time we did a walk through down, it was three, four years ago.
Yeah.
And I know things have changed hands. Like he said, they have regular trash pickup. This is just prop items that they wanna, you know. Who knows if they even bring anything in, you know?
Yeah, they may know.
But I just thought that that might be an easy way without making a big issue out of it. You give them this, you know, it's got their name on it, it's laminated.
I don't have an issue with it. Um, I think, you know, maybe a little bit of monitoring should go on when things come in to make sure that somebody's not bringing all of the household trash for the last month.
Right.
You know, from another town to Dunbar. Of course, from Dunbar, who cares? But, you know, if they're bringing golf town to Dunbar.
Well, if you, I'm thinking if we go with that rule with the laminated sticker and, you know, you know, print on the back of it says Sportsman Club, you know, so you can identify it.
Right.
That, you know, they have, when they pick it up, they sign off on it, you know, like a little blurb saying, you know, this is for, you know, the Sportsman Club only for local trash, you know, whatever, you know, that, you know, kind of sets the rules that, you know, we don't expect them to bring in outside trash.
I could get that together with Lee and have her.
Yeah.
Yeah, that could be part of the pass. It could be printed right on the backside of it. If you laminate it, one side is the pass itself and the backside is kinda like the don'ts.
Yeah, the do's and don'ts.
Yeah.
Well, you don't wanna make it ungladly too, so it's.
No, no, but you know what I mean? Yeah. Well, it's something they're gonna throw in the dashboard, you know, eight and a half by eleven.
Half a sheet.
Half a sheet, yeah. Something that's easy to identify.
Do we have a little letter answer? Okay.
Yeah.
I could have a different size.
Paint orange.
Four by six, we got eight now.
I'll get together with you. And the only other thing I wanted to mention to you, Pete, I don't wanna hear this, but revenues for this year for the markets for recyclable materials are tanking big time. Scrap metal has already dropped. In the last two and a half weeks, it's dropped forty dollars a ton and they're saying that the bottom's not there yet. We're seeing prices that are less than half of what they were last year. I, I just telling you so that when you look at the year end and you say, wow, what happened? We're producing a material, but just the markets are, they're not there. Markets are going down. I just kinda wanna give you an FYI on that.
What are they saying is happening? Why? Because they're thinking recyclables, what's going on?
Steel right now, the answer I got on steel, scrap metal is that it's sitting on the docks and they can't move it.
Really?
You know, I went to the yard and talked it where we drop off and they've got piles bigger than this building of material.
Yeah, I know it runs in cycles, but I was wondering what's changed in the world. Stacking oil is cheap.
A few years back, you had that whole building all full of cardboard and paper. Couldn't give it all.
Yeah. And, you know, fortunately, right now, we could, we're able to move material. It's taking a lot slower. It's taking a lot longer time to move. There's been a few big vendors that, um, basically have gone belly up that were moving a lot of material and now they're not moving it. You know, a lot of stuff's not going off the docks. Things are not moving and so I know.
Take a ride down Market Street and look at Nobles Island where the salt comes in, where they stockpile the tin cans that you recycle. There's a mountain that hasn't moved in three months.
I love it.
So I was just gonna talk about, there's, there's a glut in those metals right now with the, with the world economy, especially over in China. This is not that call for it, so.
Yeah.
Their financials sunk, so, I mean, they're not taking.
Even gold and silver's down really low.
Which is good.
They've halted them down.
Now's the time to buy.
Yeah.
Don't buy when it's high, but it's low.
Buy low, sell high.
Yeah.
Um, how are we doing for space and room though? I mean, obviously if you're not moving it very fast, you stock.
It was, we're getting tight, but I'm just about at the point where I can ship. I put the call out to a couple of contractors, to a couple of vendors on, on paper. Should be by the end of next week, I should have enough for a load. I need forty-four to forty-six thousand pounds. I think when I check today, I'm just about forty thousand on paper. The, I'm just at the point with every commodity to do a clean out. Even my electronics, I'm, I'm like two pallets short from making a full truckload. Cardboard, I'm like four bales short. Plastic, they're in the mix right now, uh, me and another town for plastic. So everything's into work. It's just a matter of, like I said, I'm still short a little bit of material, so probably by the end of next week, it'll be, uh, the following week because it won't happen next week. Unless I can guarantee I'm gonna have the exact ton. It'll be the following week that we'll be shipping paper out. That frees up a lot of room. That's, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven bales, depending on how many, you know, how much it's gonna take on the trucks or.
How's the burn pile doing?
Hand-rained burn again. It's, uh, it's a little more than half full. So we'll be ready to spark her up again.
Where else? You don't want to go to the.
Yeah.
Ask, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Eight nights, forty-one.
No, I'm good, good.
Anything else?
Oop, I thought I wanted to mention.
All right, chief.
I'm good.
All right. And what's that? Donna? Bob?
Also.
Thank you for coming. Anything else?
Yeah, I thought of something.
No, you lost your chance to.
I thought we had, I thought we were gonna discuss the BMSI asset management.
Because he's been busy.
Yeah.
I gave him a hard copy. Do you want a hard copy?
I don't know. I don't know what we're talking about. No, we can discuss it, but I mean, I don't know the details yet.
Yeah.
This is, um, I got a quote.
I did, but I haven't looked at the detailed Ted. Um, the, go ahead, Lee.
Let me get the, oh, it's on here. Okay, so Tom asked me to check with BMSI or I spoke to Bruce.
Yeah.
Regarding, uh, it's called Web DPW, which is an asset manager that provides tracking of.
Yeah, what we were looking for, one of the discussions we had at a board meeting was a way to, you know, track vehicle maintenance and, you know, track, um, you know, equipment that we purchase here in the town, inventory control kinda thing. So it was more than just inventory control, but a way to, you know, track, um, you know, what's going on with our vehicles and, you know, see where we are with maintenance schedules and repairs and needs and all that with the vehicles.
So the quote.
So there were two pieces to it that we were trying to accomplish.
Yeah, so the quote that they gave me is first year Web DPW hosting, hosted system cost three thousand eight hundred and forty dollars and then reoccurring annual subscription fee is fourteen hundred and forty. Um, that's quite a bit of, right, they have one listing here. First calls, work orders, citizen complaints, uh, asset maintenance, preventative maintenance, scheduling, backflow administration, capturing, um, institutional knowledge. I don't know what that would be.
That'd be like, you know, where, you know, where the skeleton's buried, you know, alongside the road.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry. Yeah, uh, material inventory, fee tracking, sign management, asset locator.
Not literally.
Yeah, there's a lot of that we would probably need.
So this, yeah.
Well, I mean, this is a lot of stuff that we're looking at. The DFW department's quite a bit of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think when you have, um, a DPW department, that they would use this. It should be helpful to them.
Right, yeah. Gossell would be probably, yeah, right on track with it.
Yeah, yeah. So I can give this to you, Ted, that's, you probably, I've got it in my system. And then at the same time, I had looked for asset manager because I knew that they provided that. That's for fixed assets. I have to provide the auditor a report of our assets through a, uh, a depreciation factor. So I add in anything that's new that we buy, like that has excess of a thousand dollars in value. If it's a trailer, a car, a computer, you know, the antique clock, well, I'll add those into, um, my asset manager. Well, two times ago, when server crashed, Jim was able to come together. The programs would continue to work. This time around, it's not functional. I can renew the license and then it'll upgrade it and it'll incorporate what I have in the computer that I can't get to. But I need to provide a report to the auditor every year of that. So I do need to get something. That one's three hundred and ten dollars. This one is pretty expensive. So it's, uh, software a thousand dollars, consulting five hundred dollars and training three hundred. So they're asking for eighteen hundred dollars and then reoccurring annual, which is a hundred and eighty. So I, I think I'm comfortable enough to just go with the, the current. So we don't utilize it other than putting in what we.
Yeah. So for doing, so doing that asset management, the existing tool.
Yes, the work for me and I don't think I want to stand.
Does the job. Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I'd like, I mean, I'd like to, you know, see what it does, you know, first and foremost, I mean, and then, you know,
Yeah.
make sure we don't cut our nose off to spite our face.
When do we do that? When do you need to renew?
I will need to have that in working order before our audit next year, so I have time.
Oh, you have time, okay.
Yeah. So I, I just have to run my report and then my, my computer crashed and that's where the program was.
Because we can have these folks, I don't know if they can, if they'll come in at night to meet with us, but we could set up, they can do a web presentation where we link up with them and, you know, we could set that up and then we could ask questions. What's that?
I got a dumb question. Uh, this is the Web DPW. It's web-based. Now, is this also all web-based? Because ideally it'd be nice to have it web-based in a sense so that way we, you know, it's. Because, I mean, it sounds like we're mixing apples and oranges here. We're gonna have some that's web-based, some that's.
Yeah, some that's on our server.
On our server, you know. I mean, information resides on our server. It stays with us, but I mean, the, you know, web-based, you know, applications.
Yeah, hosted is sometimes better actually because they back it up and.
That's how I do my field sites.
Yeah, they have the, um, recovery, you know, disaster recovery.
They talk about web-based training here, but I don't know exactly how this works.
Well, they train.
Yeah, the training could be on.
It's a webinar.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I guess that's one of the questions. That would be BMSI. Is it all, you know, does it mix and match or is it, you know, can we get it all in one format and platform?
Yeah.
Uh, can we pick and choose off of some of this stuff?
Well, that's what I was gonna ask. I mean, this is the same, right? Same company or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we're already doing business with these folks. That's why it makes sense to.
Right, so, but, you know, out of these fifteen items, it's probably ten of them we really wouldn't be interested in.
Yeah, so I don't think cherry pick through it or not.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, I would make a question.
And feed them and tracking, that's always a good one because you're not only gonna storm, because you can get money back if we do that right.
Oh, we've done that, haven't we?
Yes, but I mean, you gotta, you gotta have all your ducks in a row with those people.
Yeah, but they have a nice tool there that does it for you.
Fleet maintenance, asset maintenance, preventative maintenance, work orders.
And the, the thing that's nice about the, that Web, uh, WBDPW
Yeah.
is as you're processing your accounts payable and whatnot, as long as you're needing a certain code, it's all linked.
It's all linked. Yeah, it's all linked.
And it tracks it.
Yeah, so you're not doing something outside the box with a piece of metal where to get you there. This thing here would tie right into what we have today. So I thought that was a pretty good advantage right there.
Absolutely. Well, I mean, you know.
As opposed to going out, get another third party involved here that, you know, that you have to maintain.
That way you're only doing one data entry instead of two and then you have.
And your systems are all linked.
So, I mean, it has potential, but, I mean, again, you know, we need to evaluate. Yeah, so I think if I was in our web conference or whatever, it'd probably.
One thing I did ask her is that these prices here are a.
Full year.
Full year. So I said, can you check with Frank in the past, we've uploaded or started using certain features through BMSI and they gave us a price break because we were three months into the calendar year, so we didn't have to.
Well, you know what else I'd be curious to know about BMSI is if they have like an umbrella agreement. You know, if we're using all these different modules, why are we always paying that static cost? So why aren't we paying one fee and then you add the modules to it?
Yeah.
You know, that was one of the, because I hadn't gotten any pricing when I spoke with them, we got the pricing, so I didn't have that, but, um, but that would be something I would be curious about, you know, but they have this umbrella type agreement on, you know, that you sign up and then you add the modules to it. Because it seems like the nickel diamond is what I feel when they, you know, well, it costs you this plus all of this and this and all of this every time I go.
And they have that, but if you don't ask, we don't know. They're not gonna tell us.
Right. Right, right. So I think, you know, we should investigate that.
But I see, you know, like the preventative maintenance and fleet maintenance, like, you know, for the Chiefs cars, you know, the Chiefs video is an example since you're sitting here. You know, you send in the invoices, Allison's doing the AP, he gets coded. We get, it tracks your vehicle. We can tell you exactly how much it costs you to run that vehicle. Gas, oil, insurance, you name it, the whole nine yards and.
And you capture all your costs.
And you can take and make better decisions when it comes time to replacing it. So, you know, yeah, I think that two thousand and two, when, you know, a lot of go, it's getting old. You know, then you look at the numbers, like, oh, two thousand and six is costing us twice as much as the year ago too.
Yeah.
You might think twice about getting rid of it.
Because right now, you probably just look at the mileage in the year, you know, trying to get rid of it. When, when maybe that car isn't costing them, you know, hardly anything to pay to a new one vehicle, this is the bad year.
That's the whole idea for what we're trying to do. The, the whole town is a whole.
Sure.
You know, we keep track of all that stuff, inventory things. Yeah, well.
And I think there was even a way to do equipment maintenance through, uh, scheduling through that too, wasn't there, Lee?
Yeah. Yeah, for running.
Yeah.
So, I mean, so even like, you know, Elvin Woody's situation, he's got some pretty expensive equipment that.
Yeah, like the compacters and, you know, balers.
Yeah, that needs, you know, maintenance repair. So, I mean, it's just a way to track, you know, when he has that piston repaired, you log that in there and.
Exactly.
You know, you know, then, then we're not sitting here two years, you know, going, when did we last do that? But, yeah, I think there's some real advantage to doing it.
It also has inventory capability too, right?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah.
I, I saw that one.
Yeah, it looks like a pretty complete tool. Like I said, I only looked at it kinda quickly there. And then talked with their guy for just a few moments because they say he was on his way out to a meeting when, when I tracked him down. We haven't connected since.
How else would we go on? You guys wanna take him now?
Can we go to Frank Pony?
Good for a road trip. How about you guys? You wanna take and go for, because it'll be a whole meeting. You guys can come.
Yeah, we'll go, go to Frank Pony for a meeting. Um, yeah, how do, what would we like to set up a web, online web thing?
Probably the easiest one, right?
Yeah, I'll find out when he has, what he can do.
Yeah, finally what we need to do, pull something like that off, Lee.
Yep.
And if it can be done in the evening, that'd be great, but if not, then we can figure something out.
Absolutely.
Hope he wants to come down here and hang out with us.
Yeah, I mean, if they happen to be, let's knock it a little down. We can coordinate. That'd be cool.
Yeah, we don't have to meet here. We could meet him just about anywhere.
Okay.
Burger King.
Yep.
Taco Bell.
I'm not sure where, but there was some training, a hundred dollars.
Yeah, my favorite.
What's that?
I love Taco, Taco Bell. I love Taco Bell.
Yeah, it's okay. It's not the greatest Mexican food.
Oh, doesn't matter. I just love it.
Doesn't.
No, it doesn't have to be good. Just has to be Taco Bell.
I do have one other thing that dawned on me. Trash for, you know, the MOU with the school. I sent you guys links to state contracts.
Yeah.
Depending on the amount of pickups and the size of the, uh, the dumpster, um, depending which contract we use, it's pretty cheap. It's less than, you know, less than a thousand bucks a year for every, you know.
I don't remember seeing that.
Yeah, well, that's because I think you're.
Was that before my email was sent?
Yeah.
But I don't have it.
Okay, I'll resend it.
I said, I don't remember seeing it.
I'll resend it.
Yeah.
Can I get that?
I believe so.
And they were just, they were just links, Ted. They would have been lines, been links.
They would have been links and lines and, you know, like.
We sent that.
I'll see if I can wind it.
Wait, you can't send it in nickel?
They each have about forty pages each.
That's why I go through.
No.
Trash, all trash.
Yeah, I go through pre-catages like that.
Yeah, we have one for that too. Let's see. Cartrails.
Pre-catages, yeah.
Let's take a second.
So, all right, well, then if you don't have it, we'll table that.
Well, Ted is going to try and track down Tim because I, I've been unsuccessful connecting because my schedule and his schedule just don't.
Right.
Seem to marry up, but Ted's gonna see if he can catch up a little and I'll talk to him.
Are you starting about something different?
Yeah, I mean, we can sign, use a state contract. Basically, they'll put a dumpster there and it'll say, you know, if you don't need service, you just call and cancel service for like the, you know, like the once a month instead, you know, then the school could be once every week, you know, we can do one here once every two weeks, you know. You know, put a, you know, three yard or four yard dumpster up there and, you know, you kinda measure it, see it. I mean, it's like, you know. I think a dumpster is like, oh, God, twenty dollars and the pickup, you know, and each pickup after that's like, you know, ten dollars. I'm just throwing out straight numbers. But, I mean, you know, if you take in, um, you know, right size, the dumpster and right size, the amount of pickups.
Yeah.
You can actually come out of it pretty cheap and they just come in, they'll pick it up at, you know, like every other Wednesday or whatever.
Yeah, so that's all explained in the.
In the contract, yeah.
That's what we're sending you.
Yeah, it's, it's a state contract because they, they have a whole load of different, um, locations and stuff and you can see what it's costing them. It's not. You know, it's not.
Good.
I mean, if you're looking for like a ten yard dumpster, you know, getting picked up every other day, then, you know, it's gonna cost you.
Do you remember the dumpster size they used to have? I, I don't know.
I had to guess, it's, it was a four yard.
Four yard, okay.
I had to guess.
But they wouldn't fill a four yard up in one week, would they? Even at the busy.
Yeah, well, I think they picked it up every week.
Right.
I think it got picked up every, but the other thing you gotta understand is not, when you put a dumpster on site, no matter where you do it, and it doesn't matter where it is, it's gonna get filled by others.
Yeah, how some trash winds up in it.
Yeah, you gotta get.
Yeah, you, you can get them where they walk, they come to walk.
You can still get in them.
Yep.
I'm just, just giving you a heads up, cause that's one, one of the things that happened at the school, in the summer, it shouldn't have been getting filled, right? But it was, so, I mean, the school does generate stuff during the summer, but not like they do during the school year and it was getting filled.
Well, it's something I could take over, tell them, it's, it's part, it's just all part of the discussion, just trying to get a door.
Right. Yeah, I think, is either a two or four yard machine, uh, it was a front loader, I do.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we put one down in Campbell, I would say, do you guys want trips?
Yeah, you know. You better get down on it twice a day, cause.
Conservation commission too, they have really.
Yeah, and that's construction debris.
Conservation commission, we happy about that too.
Yeah.
Well, they're paid for it.
Yeah. I don't, I don't know if I have any, I can look at some of the little paperwork I have down there, if it says anything, what size was, it was either a two or four yard machine, you know, it was a front loader.
So, I mean, it's just something to throw out there as, you know, to take a look at as part of this whole discussion, so we can kinda get some idea. That was the only thing else I had, you know, that I remembered. All right, going once?
Twice.
Twice?
Make a motion, it'll be a jury.
You're second.
I'll second that motion.
Second it too, all's in favor, go home. Thank you, folks.